Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, December 10. If you are watching live on Monday, December 10, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our call-in number is 769-1677. We apologize to those watching at home. We got a little bit of a late start, and that was for two reasons. The first is we were speaking with folks from Pleasantville Strong and from the Pleasantville School District about positions we may jointly take about the proposed legalization of marijuana that is floating around as a policy proposal here in New York State, and it appears more likely than not that some form of legalization is likely to happen. Quite a bit of concern on the part of Pleasantville Strong, which they have articulated very well about the impacts of that on kids. And so, we are collectively working on the possibility of a joint resolution, which could be a statement of our opinion to the state legislature and to the governor. And secondly, to start thinking about ways in which such a thing may impact Pleasantville in ways that we might position ourselves to reduce that impact on our kids. So, more on that as it develops, but certainly thank Pleasantville Strong for flagging that issue, as they have flagged so many issues in our community. So, I have a bunch of other announcements to make, but just for starters, our next regular meeting would normally occur on Christmas Eve, and so, we are going to schedule a short session on Thursday, December 27 at 10:00 a.m., and that will be a very short meeting primarily to move forward, check requests and the like, and then we will be back with a full schedule in January. So, tonight, we're going to lead off with a presentation by the folks from inside, our civil engineers and Hudson Valley Engineering, who have been retained to assist us in not only in the part of insight, working out the engineering aspects of our Manville Road Street Improvement Project and its interface with our proposed civic space at Memorial Plaza, but also in assisting us with Hudson Valley Engineering in looking at the traffic impacts of those two projects and coming back to us with data and analysis of all of the above. We've seen some of that over the last few months, and now these folks are back with more. So, welcome, Rich Williams from Inside.
So, thank you and good evening. My name is Rich Williams, and I am with Insight Engineering. What I wanted to do before I turn it over to my colleagues at HBEA is just give a brief overview on the history of this project, where it came from. I'll walk you through the site plans, and then I just want to talk about where we are in the DOT process and our next steps. So, as most of the board may recall, the concepts that you see outlined in our design plans originated in 2007, when the Village of Pleasantville teamed with Westchester County and hired RBA Group to do the Memorial Plaza Intermodal Conceptual Planning Study. And the focus of that study was to enhance pedestrian safety and bicycle safety for the users in the downtown Pleasantville area. After that study was completed in 2011, the village received a grant to advance the design. There was no construction funding tied to that grant, just funding to advance design work. So, our office was retained to take those concepts outlined in the RBA study and put forth a preliminary engineering design, which we did, and much of which remains the same on the drawings that have been presented before you, and which I'll show you in a few moments. Fast forward to 2017, the village was able to secure a grant from the New York State DOT. This was done through their locally administered federally aid project program. And again, the premise of that grant was increasing pedestrian safety and safety for all modes of transportation within the downtown area, so things like bicycle safety, ADA accessibility, all of the above. Now, what I want to stress is, as I talk about improving pedestrian safety, one of the concerns we've talked a great length about is traffic. A lot of transportation improvements are focused on relieving congestion and improving what we call, you know, throughput or traffic flow for motorists. This project is not one of those projects. This is about pedestrian safety, and while we're not increasing throughput or flow or relieving congestion, we certainly have focused on not making it worse. As we've talked at length, and as my colleagues are going to talk about, you know, there are times during peak periods where there is congestion in the downtown village, and we have studied that. And again, as we put forth these improvements of pedestrian safety, the focus is not degrading the level of service at the intersections and the road networks, but respecting what exists today while still weaving in these improvements to make the downtown more user-friendly and safer. So, to walk you through the site plan, which we have up on the screen, I'm going to move from west to east, and we're going to start at the intersection of Manville Road, I'm sorry, Manville Road, Memorial Plaza and Grant Street. North is up, so if you follow my laser pointer, we're now moving westbound down Manville Road. As you can see at the intersection, many of the crosswalks stay in the same area. What we've done is we've taken the existing aerial photographs and overlaid them on our site plan, so the public can help see the differences in what we're proposing. One of the changes at this intersection is we're going to be pulling the curb line back and increasing the sidewalk width through this portion of the site, and also extending the sidewalk to the south. This results in the elimination of what we call the slip ramp, which is the free right-turn lane that exists today. And we're going to talk in a few moments, that is something that HBEA has studied at great length to ensure that the elimination of this slip ramp and refocusing of traffic to the intersection doesn't result in a degradation of service at that intersection. Some of the other things we're going to be doing at this intersection is actually formalizing lanes. This is a theme that you're going to see at some of the other intersections as we move further east. This part of the village has a lot of wide expanses of pavement that aren't designated or demarked lanes, and if you're a motorist at some of these intersections and you're approaching, it's not clear, is this a left-turn lane, is this a right-turn lane? And it can lead to driver confusion. We're going to start to rectify that by formalizing some of the lanes. That results in the need to create some curbed islands, which will help funnel the traffic, as well as create pedestrian refuges, which is a key part of the funding. We'll also be adding crosswalks at Vanderbilt and Manville. Moving further to the east, you can now see we have Manville Road, we have Washington Street, Wheeler Avenue and Tompkins. We're going to be in this part of the Manville Road corridor improvements, shortening a lot of the crosswalk lines. That was something that was identified as a safety concern for pedestrians, and we're going to be doing that by creating a series of curbed peninsulas. These peninsulas do two things. One, they help funnel the traffic into demarcated lanes, and two, they also allow us to shorten those irregular crosswalks. So, you can see here, and here are some of those existing long crosswalks, which will now be shortened. In addition, on the east side, we have a curved island that will be created. And again, many of these improvements are consistent with that former RBA study. There have been slight modifications as we've moved through this process with the village. We've solicited input from the public, from the fire department, from the farmer's market, you know, all of their comments have been weaved into this design. So, for instance, one of the things you'll see is we've modified some of the curb islands, lengths and radiuses to better accommodate the fire department traffic. With respect to process, since this is part of the federally administered local aid project program, there is a fairly lengthy step-by-step DOT process that is prescribed to us. We are in what's called the design review phase. The design review phase is completed when our design report is accepted and seeker is completed. The village right now is undergoing through some of these traffic studies and other things that you're undertaking, the seeker process, and we have received comments from DOT on the initial design report submittal, and we've responded to the majority of them. We have a couple more responses to develop and envision that being resubmitted before the holidays. Once that's completed, we move into final design, then bidding, and then construction. The DOT has specified the schedule for us, and they've currently slated this project to begin in the spring of 2020. So, that's the target we're ultimately working towards right now.
Shovel? That's...
That's construction beginning.
Okay.
So, you know, with that target, we ideally want to bid sometime towards the latter part of next year to queue up for that spring construction.
Does that scheduling have to do with them not wanting to fund before then? Is that what that's about? Or just, I said it before you weren't in the room, we just commented on how long this is all taking, and I'm finding it extremely frustrating that we can't seem to get through a major construction project, yes, but it's been years. So, I'm just curious if this delay to start digging till the spring of 2020 from the state as a result, do you think of them not wanting to fund until then? Or is there something else that I'm missing? It just seems like a thing forever, so...
No, and I sympathize with you. As an engineer, we like to see our projects complete and built. No, I don't think it has to do with them having a desire to fund. I think one of the major decisions that they have to factor is what's known as winter conditions. If you start a construction project at the wrong time, and you run into the winter in the New York State DOT right-of-way, you went through winter conditions. There's a lot of work you can't undertake when the weather gets too cold. Concrete work, pavement, so now all of a sudden you have to implement all these temporary measures to basically hold the right-of-way safe and sound mid-construction, and it increases project budget and also usually stakeholder frustration, because you're seeing a lot of active construction with no work happening. That being said, there's then windows we have in which to start the work, and you want to make sure that you leave enough time, or the DOT leaves enough time in their process, which is a step-by-step process, because this does tie to federal funds ultimately coming through New York State in order to start in the spring, so we don't run into winter conditions. That's the primary driver. I'm going to turn it over now to HBEA, because they're going to talk about all the nitty-gritty and traffic detail that they ran. Before I do the, you know, we've heard loud and clear that the village is concerned about traffic. As I said, this isn't what I would call a throughput or a traffic congestion solving project, but one about pedestrian safety and maintaining the current levels of service. What's noteworthy to mention is that, you know, the village has taken extra steps to make sure that the traffic study that we've put forth integrates local opinion. You've reached out to your local planners who serve your planning commission, FP Clark and BFJ. FP Clark has conducted a peer review, taking their local knowledge and working with the planning commission. They performed a peer review of the study that HBEA has put forth and corroborated it, specifically with respect to elimination of the slip ramp and the fact that it won't degrade the level of service. And you've also engaged BFJ, who helped develop the village with their current comp plan, to take a look at parking cumulatively throughout the village to make sure, as we talk about the civic space, that we won't be degrading parking within the village, because one of the improvements and one of the major drivers behind these improvements and the elimination of the slip ramp is we're creating the pallet, basically the area of which the civic space will be treated. And without the elimination of the slip ramp, that wouldn't be possible. This is Mr. Joe Poblieta from HBEA.
Okay. Yeah. Yes. Okay. Good evening. Our role on this project was to take counts of traffic in the AM and the PM peak period, which we initiated these studies going back to last November, and we've updated them this past November, and these are the locations where traffic was counted. We've been out in the morning, and we, in consultation with the village, we were counting, starting in the upper left, at the memorial grant, Manville intersection, going to the right, the Manville-Wheeler, the Manville-Washington, Tompkins, and on the lower left, we also looked at the counts, the traffic that was flowing at Memorial Plaza in Bedford. And we also, as part of the study, we also later went up and counted traffic at Sawmill River Parkway and Grant Street. Okay? So, let's see if this works here. Okay. All right. So, basically, we have morning counts. In the circles up there, the black numbers are the morning counts, and the red numbers are the afternoon counts. And basically, for all the intersections, the evening counts are about 20 to 25% higher than the morning counts. Okay? Now, while we were doing this, and this project, we were made aware of the project at 70 Memorial Plaza on Holy Street, and we were asked to include traffic projections that were done for that project into the analysis here. So, those counts were added into the software that we use to run this program. Okay? So, the standard traffic control, Syncro, is a software program that runs the highway-capacity manual project program that was developed in 2010 by the Transportation Research Board. Now, what it does is it takes the volume of traffic on every leg, and I'm sure you've seen this before, but I think it's worthwhile to go through it again, and equates how much delay each vehicle sees in each leg. So, for example, if a vehicle going through sees an average of 0 to 10 seconds delay, that's considered a level of service A. That's about the best you're going to get. And for every next 10 seconds, you know, if a vehicle detects 10 to 20 seconds of delay, it's a B, and then goes down and keeps getting progressively worse. For AM and PM peak hours, an A, B, or C level of service is pretty good. But, you know, traffic is like politics. It's all local. One man's congestion, one person's congestion, and another person's free flow. So, this rating system helps define, compare one intersection to another. So, what we did was, we took those counts that were done in the morning and in the evening, and with the, ran through the software, and these are the results for the Manville-Memorial-Grant Street intersection. Now, eastbound is on Manville, westbound is on Manville, northbound is going through Grant and from Memorial to Grant, and southbound is from Grant to Memorial. So, you can see in the morning that you've got a pretty good level of service, 14.4. That's the average seconds delay for all the vehicles in the intersection. Okay? The southbound move there, if you see that, this one here, that gets the most delay in the morning. You've got a lot of traffic coming from Grant through to Manville. Now, in the PM, the average delay through that intersection is 15.6 seconds. Eastbound and westbound, it's 14 and a half to 13 and a half, and northbound, there's a big delay. That's the queues that occur going to the Sawmill Parkway, generally when the trains get in, the cars unload from the parking lots, and you get quite a bit of delay. And while we were out there, we noticed that the queuing from Sawmill Parkway along Grant sometimes came back quite a bit. It almost got back to the intersection. So, in April of last year, we went out in the evening, we did counts at night just to confirm how many vehicles were going there, and we ran those through Syncro to see what we were observing, was it actually, you know, was the software predicting? And also, we did notice too, that on Manville from Wheeler down, there were queues coming from the signals at Washington and Wheeler. Now, those signals, two signals are on one controller, and the one thing about that controller is it has a dedicated pedestrian phase. When you push the ped button, I'm sure you're all aware of this, it goes red across the whole intersection. So, depending upon how many times that button gets pushed in a typical hour, you could markedly increase that queue and degrade the travel through the intersection. So, we ran a couple of examples of what might happen, just to give you an idea of what we were seeing and what the software predicted would happen, both for the Grant Street and the queue coming down from Wheeler. Okay? Now, the improvements that Rich was talking about, the thing that is going to be added in the proposed condition is this right-turn lane. There's going to be a dedicated right-turn lane coming up. Here's the parking lot. The slip ramp is removed, so a right-turn lane will be coming up here, and we'll be able to make that movement that replaces the slip ramp. Likewise, there is a westbound dedicated right-turn lane to make the right turn out to Grant. So, when we ran the proposed, well, the existing traffic through the software was with this configuration, showing the dedicated lanes. So, when we run this, these were the existing conditions here that I showed you in the previous slide. Now, these are the level of service with those new right-turn lanes from Memorial Plaza to Manville and from Manville to Grant. And you can see, basically, the overall service is, I would call this flat. You're going from 14.4 seconds of overall delay to 14. That's in the build year 2020, and in the projected 10 years out, it goes up about another second of overall delay.
Are these projections just for 2020 and 2030 just run by the software, or did you guys run some manual calculations or something?
What we do is, we discuss with New York State DOT, what are they using for projected traffic increase for the foreseeable future? And they're using a half a percent. Half a percent per year, the traffic would increase. Okay?
I understand, so that's how you get to 2030 from 2020, but how'd you get to 2020? That's what I'm interested in, because that's what's going to happen sooner.
The 2020...
How'd you get those numbers?
The 2020 includes the half a percent for each of the two years, and it's basically the counts that were taken, adding a half a percent plus the...
But you're also taking the new configuration into consideration.
Yes.
So, I'm just curious how you did that.
Okay. So, basically, that's shown here. All right? Before, you had a westbound movement only on Manville.
With no turn lane.
Now, you're going to have a westbound through left and a westbound right. You're going to have two lanes there handling that traffic. Okay? Likewise, northbound on Memorial Plaza, before, you only had the one lane where the traffic would go through, because the traffic from the slip ramp was getting a free shot up to Wheeler. That traffic was calculated as being at Wheeler. It wasn't going through the signal.
So, folks' concerns are, without the slip lane, there's some certain amount of traffic that goes on the slip lane, and you have to throw that into the mix too, because it no longer will be. Now, we'll be making a right-hand turn.
Yes.
And the other thing is, from Memorial Plaza parking lot, cars don't even hit Marble Avenue or Memorial Plaza roadway. They go straight out onto Manville. That all merges together, and I'm just curious about your methodology for figuring that.
Okay. Right here, this is the traffic from the slip ramp.
Right.
Okay? This traffic, when we do the existing, we only look at these, because this is a free move. It's not going through the signal.
So, that first grid that you showed doesn't account for the slip lane traffic?
Right, because the slip ramp traffic is going directly out to Manville.
It's not accounted for in any of those times.
Right. In the proposed, this traffic here, all this traffic goes through the right-turn lane and makes that, and is accounted for.
Got it. And even with that, you're still coming up with those very comparable numbers.
Yes. And the reason, well, the part of the reason here is that this northbound right, this is that lane that's going to take the slip ramp traffic. Okay? So, before, where you had northbound, you had a level of service 18.9 seconds was the average delay over the course of the peak hour in the morning for that traffic. With these two lanes added, the northbound through left and the northbound right, you're basically dropping that from 18.9 to 13.6 seconds. Okay?
I'm sure this comes up later maybe in your presentation, but can you go back to the map for a second?
Sure.
I, I, yep, no, you were right. No? There. I just look at this intuitively and go, I understand why your software would have put out an A grade on that turn lane, but the length of distance between where those crosswalks are and where these folks are going to come out of the parking lot is going to, I feel, or I'm curious if the data showed any impact, of the same queuing problem that you talked about at Grant Street and up at the light at Washington? Because that's, what I look at this as a layman, this going, you know, the simple kind of, hmm, like, is that going to work? I worry about people not being able to get out of the parking lot, because they can't turn where your pointer is. Or if they can, the light up at Washington is red, and everybody's queued down. And again, like you've said in your reports, only when trains come out, but that's why I was late earlier. I got out on a train, and it's packed.
Yes. And we, this is, that condition, we observed it, and that's why we did the additional counts at Grant and the Sawmill.
Right.
And we also ran the simulation of the ped button actuation at Washington. Okay? And I'll talk about that a little bit.
Okay. Yeah. I'll go ahead.
And just to piggyback on to Steve's concern, is it possible to work with the state on the light at that intersection, and in fact, the one down on the Sawmill River Parkway, to, at certain times, when a train comes in...
Yeah, coordinate.
Stop traffic on Manville and let the traffic on Marble Avenue go.
Okay, you're jumping ahead.
Go.
Why don't we let Joe finish, and then we'll bounce back.
Okay. So, let's go back to this.
No.
Wait a minute.
Question asking. That's my turn. So, you know, this is, with the addition of the two right-turn lanes, basically nullifies that free slip ramp movement, mainly the one on the northbound one here, the northbound right. Okay? Because you're basically decreasing that delay. This is almost a free move. 5.5 seconds of delay, average per vehicle. You know, some of them are going to hit there and wait the signal, but others are going to hit it, and they're going to be just making that right turn. Okay? So, basically, what it's saying is, there isn't going to be a degradation from the removal of slip ramp, but we did notice the queuing from Grant and the queuing coming down from Wheeler. So, what we did was, we did counts up at Grant, and we looked at the, basically, the afternoon counts, because the queuing doesn't occur as bad in the morning. There's a lot less traffic going out of Grant in the morning than there is in the evening. And what the software is predicting now is, with the volume of traffic and the signal timing that's going on at Sawmill and Grant, you're going to see a 382-foot queue, which is about what you see, because the distance from Grant to Memorial-Manville-Grant intersection is about 450 feet. So, there are nights when we were, when we counted, we did see the traffic back up three-quarters of the way to that intersection. Okay? Now, it occurs, like you say, when the trains come, the traffic backs up for five to 10 minutes, and then it dissipates away. And I have to say, having ridden Metro North, almost every train station along Metro North has the same phenomena occurring every evening. Trains come in, the people get out, the signal gets overloaded temporarily, and then it dissipates after five minutes until the next train comes in. Took the train from Grand Central to Poughkeepsie for a year and a half, and the exact same scenario happened, and people were going every which way to bypass the signal. So, we're, one of our recommendations is, this is something that has to be kept an eye on. You know, right now, it doesn't say that it's going to, it should back up to the signal, but it's going to get pretty close. But it's something the village will have to keep track of. The 2007 RBA study mentioned that there were about 30 round-trip trains, you know, from Pleasantville to Grand Central and back during the day. Right now, if you look at the train schedule, that averages anywhere between 36 and 37 a day. So, five years down the road, if you're up to 40-some trains average round trip, that may get into the 450-foot. Okay? Now, the other thing that we noticed, and what we did here, and I don't want this number to scare anybody, but the Wheeler-Washington signal has dedicated pedestrian phase, the 25-second, all red. We ran the simulation for existing conditions, which assumed that half of the signal actuations included pedestrian actuation of the button. Okay? So, that signal is a 90-second signal. Over the course of an hour, there could be 40 actuations of that signal. If the ped phase is included, it goes to 110, 120 seconds, which drops it to about 30 actuations per second. So, you could have anywhere from 30 to 40... So you could have anywhere from 30 to 40 actuations of that signal, full cycle, depending on if the ped phase is pushed or if it just runs without ped phase. If the ped phase is pushed half the time, of the 36 cycles, if it's pushed half the time, and the software treats it random, it doesn't say, somebody pushes, somebody doesn't, somebody pushes, it just says, maybe you get two or three in a row, then two that you don't, then two. It does it random. What it says is, you could get a 420-foot queue, okay? Under existing and proposed. Now, the distance from Wheeler to Memorial is 300 feet. There are times when we were out there, we did see the traffic backing up and there was traffic backing up onto the ramp, okay? Now, this could, this can be a concern, but with the project going on now, the, what we're going to recommend is that, as part of the project, the Memorial-Grant-Mandville signal be coordinated with the signal at Washington. You're putting in sidewalks, it's a great opportunity, you can run some conduit and cable, and have that signal coordinated, so that if the queuing does go down, it could deactivate, you know, shut down the Mandville-Grant signal, you know, to stop traffic from flowing, let that, and let the Washington-Wheeler queue go through, okay? Right. Any questions on that so far?
We're with you.
Okay.
Just, wait, hold on.
Yep.
But this doesn't measure, and I don't, I don't think we asked you to, and I don't think it would be able to be measured yet anyway, but this doesn't measure Grant, Mandville, Memorial, south.
Into Memorial, down to Memorial Plaza?
Yeah. Southbound, toward Bedford Road.
Measuring as a--
As a queue.
Yes, we did, we did that. It's not in the slide, but it's in the report.
Okay.
Basically, the, that right queue, that queue for the right turn lane, doesn't get beyond 50 feet.
Really?
Yes.
Even with the 400 and whatever coming out of there that would have otherwise--
No, it's not 400, it's, let me go back real quick.
On the slip lane, there was a PM number of 400 and something.
Hold on. Let me see if I--
There, 460, oh, sorry, 170--
It's 178 in the evening, 69 in the morning. So that is, that 178 is over the peak hour in the evening.
Right.
That equates to about three cars a minute.
Is that through 7:00 PM?
That is, that's, yeah, when we redid the counts, the peak hour, we went through from four to six. We saw, we saw traffic starting to tail off there.
Right.
We do know that when the Burns Theater--
Right.
--has five movies going, you could see a peak continue into the seven o'clock ride.
I just know a lot of people get off trains between six and seven.
Yeah.
The other thing to realize is, at the moment, anybody who's parked on the commuter side has no choice but to go up the slip lane and potentially go in around the block if their goal was to get over to Bedford Road--
Sure.
--or to whatever. So some piece of this traffic, in the new condition, won't go through there at all, because they'll have the opportunity--
Only the folks that are north of the cut right now.
Well, but, but-- But the cut, there will be an opportunity at the, at the end of the parking lot, right near the new civic space, to turn left or right.
Turn left or right.
Right.
So, so here's a question on that. Did your numbers for the slip lane include cars leaving the parking lot?
Yes.
It's not just coming off of--
The 178 cars in the peak hour coming through the slip ramp, roughly 40% of them were traffic from the parking lot. The other 60% were cars on Memorial just making that right.
And did your then-analysis for 2020, after the improvements are done, include exactly what the mayor just said? The fact that some of those cars are not really going, they have, they go now to the right of Mandville Road, but in reality, they're going somewhere else. And, and so if they were able to get out of the parking lot a different way, they might turn left down to Bedford Road, or they might go up to Mandville and turn left on Mandville.
No, we analyzed the worst case, that they would continue going the way they're going. If, you know, I understand there's proposed changes to the entrance, that mid-lot entrance there. So if they do turn left, that would be just less cars--
It only makes it--
It only makes it better. So the left lane, left-hand turn lane at that intersection, and the ability to turn left out of the mid-parking lot cut would only alleviate this.
Right.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. You know, and one thing, just, when you're trying to control the traffic on Mandville, Mandville is, has the bulk of the through traffic. You know, to keep that flowing, a lot of times, you have to delay the side road traffic from getting there. That free flow from Mandville, you know, through the slip ramp, you know, while it's good for the people who want to get out quick, it kind of--
It's overloading those two signals, right?
Overloading the next signal.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, we went through this, this. So these were the two things that we thought needed to still be, you know, watched. The Grant Street, it's not a problem yet. It's 382, you got 450, but it could become a problem in the future. Discussions with DOT about the signal timing at Grant and Sawmill might need to be undertaken. The existing condition, Wheeler Avenue with Washington, they're on the same controller. Having the Grant-Memorial-Mandville signal coordinated with this signal controller, we're recommending that you should continue those discussions with DOT for this project to do that. And since you're ripping up sidewalk and putting some stuff in, it's the perfect time to be, to be considered.
You would endorse that--
Yes.
--solution?
Yeah. Okay. We did a real brief, I just put this up, we did a real brief parking lot utilization while we were out there last November. Memorial Plaza, 102 spaces, in the morning, 8:00 to 10:00, 75% occupied, 10:00 to 3:00, 90%. We went back in April, the people were asking about the evening, from 6:00 PM, 97% occupied, or 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and then 6:00 to 7:00, it dropped off to about 75%. Parking on Cooley Street, 71 spaces, 8:00 to 10:00, it was, it grew up to 50% occupied, and then between 10:00 and 3:00 PM, 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM, it averaged about 62% occupied. And the meter parking that's opposite Wheeler, 43 spaces, the use built to 50% by noon, and it was 95% from 1:00 to 3:00. So that was a one-day snapshot, so to speak, of those parking spots, which I understand is going to be expanded. So, basically, our findings were that there will be no degradation of that intersection operations, the Memorial-Mandville-Grant, with the removal of slip ramp and the added turn lanes. The peak hour of PM, Grant Street queues, they're going to require future monitoring. And we recommend the coordination of all the Mandville Road signals, you know, down to Memorial-Grant be pursued with DOT.
Thank you, sir. So, just to recap, a couple of things Rich already touched on at the outset is, first off, thank you for all of this. And we, as Rich mentioned at the outset, engaged FP Clark, longstanding consultants to the village and to the planning commission. And you want to touch on that, Eric? We engaged them as a peer review to make sure we're all on the same page.
Sure. So their team analyzed all the data, put forth by HVA. There's a memo attached to this, this item that concludes their findings, which is, they align with what HVA has concluded as well. So we thought it was worthwhile to get another set of eyes on it, and the outcomes did not change.
And then, also, as referred to by both of you, we've engaged BFJ, the planners who assisted with our comprehensive plan and our rezoning efforts in this zone, to take a more comprehensive look at parking. And George Jacques Mart, who is the transportation lead in that firm, is working on that and will hear back January-ish?
Yeah, we're going to wait till after the holiday season to do the analysis, but come, come mid-January, we'll have more information on that.
And all of that feeds not only into traffic issues and parking capacity, but also a realistic appraisal of where we are in terms of the utilization of the parking we have and how we address the fact that some of the parking in Memorial Plaza would be lost to the proposed civic space. So more later on that. So, just, just, just to recap what you've already said, the bottom line here is, you feel with substantial confidence that although some individual drivers may be inconvenienced in comparison to what they do now, the overall traffic conditions will not be harmed.
Correct.
And I say that, because I think it's important to make a distinction between the overall traffic conditions and the function of the intersections, and the capacity of an individual driver who has a specific goal to get around, avoid a traffic light, whatever. I mean, all of us have been guilty of that at one point or another, but as Rich also mentioned in his very useful preamble, thank you for that, a big piece of this is to say, we're trying to make the street safer for pedestrians. And I think anyone who has traveled along Mandville Road, when trains are letting out, when people are going to or from the theater, when it's a rainy night, it is quite clear that there is a significant pedestrian vehicular conflict. And our goal here is, obviously, to improve safety, but secondarily, to assist in creating a more pedestrian-friendly environment, which hopefully allows people to leave their car a little farther away and, and walk. And secondly, to assist a bit in healing the divide of the railroad cut, which has, ever since it was done in the 1959-60-61 era, created a sort of a visual, practical, and certainly an emotional divide between one side of the village and the other. So, one, it's easier to walk from one side to the other, especially along Mandville, that feels like it will be also a significant benefit, so. Any other questions for Joe? Sure, if you could come to the microphones, though folks can't, at home can hear it. And we need your name and address for the record, Sarah.
Sure, sure. Dennis Tornchoff, Washington Avenue. I had addressed a letter to you a couple of times. I'm still concerned about that light near the Burns Theater, that stop-stying light.
Right.
Was anything done with that light about removing it?
The double light, you mean?
Yes.
Yes, so, yes. And Roger Pollack, who you may know, lives on Grove Street, has identified what he thinks is the flaw. We've sent that to the state DOT. It's a tough spot, maybe, can you comment on that at all? The problem here is, we've got these two lights right next to one another. It's easy for some drivers to sort of have a red, but see the green that's another 50 yards down the way.
I have to say, I know it's tough--
Yep.
It's, to me, it's as important as holding up the project. Because when I come down Washington, having been here 25 years or so, I've seen numerous cars do what you're saying.
Cruising right through.
And I don't know if it's their fault or not, it's just the green and the red, so--
Yeah.
We cannot minimize the importance of either taking it out or doing something with the light.
Well, so--
So what?
You mean, take out the one that's closer to Wheeler?
The second one.
Right. So the trouble, the--
I know, I know it's a state--
Right.
I just don't know what the answer--
We have definitely, definitely put it front and center in front of them.
What did you guys, did you look at that?
We, we did look at it, it's unique, we've never seen something like that.
That's great. That's like being the case study at the hospital.
I think that's a, you know, a perfect opportunity to discuss with DOT. There may have been a valid reason why it was done a while ago, and maybe that reason is not, you know, around anymore.
Or we solved it with some of these pedestrian improvements, right?
Right.
Well, painfully, and now I date myself, it was in the 80s that Wheeler, and this all happened in rapid-fire order, Wheeler was two-way with parallel parking on both sides. It was made one-way with the current diagonal parking. And at the same time, the intersections at both ends of Wheeler were signalized, they were just stop signs previously, two-way, two-way stop signs. So that's when it all happened. Not all that long ago in the old scheme of things. I mean, I, God knows, I'm not old enough for it to have been that long ago.
Well, just hypothetically, if, if there was no crosswalk on that, on the, on the bridge side, and people had to walk across Washington Avenue and go to the crosswalk there, could you conceivably then get rid of--
You mean--
You would just have a right turn or a left?
What do you mean? Get rid of the crosswalk that's between Duck and Donuts and the--
Yeah, so-- The Burns.
People are going to cross there anyway.
They are going to, they do, they cross diagonally as it is.
Here. Well, yeah, I mean, not, that's not the way it looks now. Right now, we have the huge, long diagonal. I was wondering, if that option isn't given, then I wonder if we then don't need that light?
In context of the process we're in, we, we are going to investigate this with DOT.
Okay.
I think everybody here recognizes that it is an awkward situation.
It's awful. It's dangerous.
We are the case at that hospital. But we've got a time when we do that. So as we make that design report resubmission, we're going to engage in conversations with them to start the process. Ultimately, what happens is, after the design report is approved and secret's concluded and we go into final design, we have to go through a highway work permit process, where there's actually going to be highway work permits issued for signal modifications and for all these improvements. And I imagine that's the time we're really going to get under the hood of this issue. And your DOT's opinion, because even though we all have an opinion, I think we all agree, they're going to have their own opinion, and their opinion is probably going to dictate.
Steve, to me, the problem is when you're up for that, is when you're traveling on Mandville Road westbound, there's a light, and then there's another light at Wheel, at Washington Avenue, and then there's a light at, at Wheeler. If you just eliminated the light in that direction, you stop at one light, when it goes green, anything that's on the other side of the light clears out, they're gone. You know, and people coming out of Washington, they can make their right and go, you know, and it's fine.
Yeah, that's the one you don't need. If, as long, just to back up on a thing, wouldn't, wouldn't we want to have already figured out what, what would be a good alternative there before we're in a final design phase? I mean, I, I have no idea the progression of this or the cadence, so I apologize if I'm saying--
No.
Like, that board member, you probably go, oh my God.
No. We all know better, I hate to tell you.
Yeah.
You're asking the right question, and the answer is, you don't get in front of the traffic signal group until you submit for highway work permits--
Got it.
--just tip of this--
Doesn't matter, all right.
But we can start the conversation. And what's going to happen is, we're going to talk to our liaison who reviews the design review side. He's going to talk to his liaison and counterparts--
Got it. Take some temperature.
--who we have good relationships with, take some temperatures. You know, I think we're going to ask them if they can eliminate the light. You know, the only thing is, I don't want to come before you and make promises that I can't keep.
I understand.
I mean, there's, there's a reason it's there, the question is, can it be achieved otherwise, so.
We're going to ask the questions.
I, I feel like the one at Wheeler Avenue, that one, is in two directions, just because that was the thing to do. Like, you don't need one in the westbound direction at all.
Well, you're trying to stop traffic, essentially, as it comes off the bridge from--
No, no, coming in eastbound direction, I agree with you, you need to, you need to have a light there, same in the other direction.
Whatever, so, okay, so we're on that case, and, and thank you, Dennis, for that. Can I ask, Rich, before you leave, HVA, HVEA recommended, and logically so, whatever infrastructure is required to coordinate these two lights? Is that the conduit, whatever, is that in our cost estimates now, or is that an add item?
That will be an add item.
And is that a significant one, do you think?
I'm not going to envision that it is based on the level of sidewalk reconstruction we're already doing.
We're going to be doing it anyway.
Okay. Yeah. All right, appreciate that.
That was to your point, right? It's already dug out.
Yeah. All right, are there any questions left from the board, or from our not very big audience, but thank you for being an audience? All right, thank you, guys. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
We appreciate that effort. All right, then, just make a couple of announcements and then we'll jump to our resolutions. I, I had a very interesting afternoon on Friday. Jamie Maslin Larson, who is the landscape architect from Wagner Hodgson, who is the lead designer on our project for the Memorial Plaza Civic Space, is also an adjunct professor in the graduate program in landscape architecture at City College in, in Manhattan. And she taught a design workshop class for graduate students in landscape architecture this semester, and she gave them the problem of creating a civic space in Memorial Plaza as the semester project. And I was invited as part of the critique team to see the final presentations from, I guess it was eleven students, and it was really, really, really an interesting day. And Jamie and I had a casual chat about whether we could find someplace to tack these things up as a brief and informal exhibition here in Pleasantville. A number of them headed off into uncharted waters with really interesting ideas, and just kind of an interesting opportunity to see what a bunch of young creative, future landscape architects came up with in our community. So I thank Jamie for that, and I thank the students who were involved, and more on that if we're able to make it happen. I just wanted to recap, a number of people have asked about the letter they received from Constellation and the Village of Pleasantville about the new contract renewing the Community Choice Aggregation Program. That's the program by which quite a few communities, initially, I think seventeen, now up to twenty-some-odd communities, have joined together to aggregate the customer demand for electricity in an effort to get better rates. So folks who are already in this program, which is the large majority of our residents if you chose to remain in and not opt out, got a letter indicating new rates for the next contract term have been established. They are very, very similar to the old rates, it's really a pretty desirable plan, saved everybody who was in the plan a bit of money as compared to having stayed with default supplier ConEd. Your power is still delivered, as it always was, by ConEd. Repairs and bricks, pulls and wires are all handled by ConEd, as they always were. So there have been a couple of mailings sent out. I know I got one of them from other ESCOs, alternative energy suppliers, that have, I think, fair to say, purposely tried to look a bit like they were the same official notice that came from Sustainable Westchester, Constellation, and the Village. You need to read those carefully, and you need to compare the rates. It is worth remembering that you can go to westchesterpower.org, and you can see exactly what the rates are, and you can compare them to the trailing averages from ConEd, and you can also compare them to any offer that is made to you in any other way. So I can tell you that I have received at least two different offers in the mail that were very nearly double the rate that's available in the Community Choice Program. So caveat emptor, and get yourself to westchesterpower.org if you would like more information. The Pleasantville Music Festival, July thirteenth, tickets are now on sale at the REC Center. You can also find out more information at pleasantvilmusicfestival.com. I want to thank the folks who came out for the lighting ceremony we had last week, for the tree and the dreidel, nice crowd, and the support we have always gotten year after year after year from the folks at Pace University who provide the hot chocolate and marshmallows, and the folks at the Chamber of Commerce who helped so much in getting everything organized. And then lastly, we also had last week an information session about coyotes, the second in our series. Very, very interesting presentation by wildlife biologists associated with Myanis River Gorge, and also the Gotham Coyote Project, a guy named Chris Nakey. Very interesting, useful evening, and it is now up at PCTV76.org as an on-demand webcast, so I encourage anyone who's interested in the subject to take a look at that. And thanks again to PCTV for making that available, not only taping it, but getting it up on the web. So, any other announcements?
I just wanted to also thank Pleasantville Recycles, who held an informational meeting on November nineteenth and December third at the library, a Q and A about the reusable bag initiative that the Village passed and about recycling more broadly. And for any of you who may have missed that, please visit pleasantvillerecycles.org, and you can reach out to them directly with any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, to the resolutions, two fifty-five, Nicole.
Almost there. The date's not... Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the BTH Foundation for the Into the Light Walk on Sunday, the ninth, two thousand and nineteen, pending submission of insurance documents, and be it further resolved that the Village Police Chief has the authority to cancel the event due to adverse weather conditions or other safety concerns.
So that's Sunday, June nine, right?
Oh, right, right, right.
Manning says June nine, but the resolution did...
Steve warned me, I was like, I would...
Is there a second? So Eric, this has been reviewed by the police chief. This would be the second annual walk into the light, it takes place very early in the morning, as it did the last time, certainly an extraordinarily worthy cause for a very Pleasantville purpose.
Yes, absolutely, and has plenty of time to get the word out about it and market the event to so.
Okay. All in favor? High motion approved, two fifty-six, Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Recreation, hereby authorizes the request to increase the hourly, I guess wage, right, from twenty dollars to twenty dollars and fifty cents for the following recreation assistance employed in the Village Panther Club program, and the list of rec assistance is included in the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? This is within the budget, Eric.
Great program.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
High motion approved, Joe, two fifty-seven.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the following donations, from an anonymous source, one thousand dollars for the Clinton Street Center programs, and from Roseanne Bell CPA, twenty-five dollars, contribution and recognition of work by the Beautification Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it's obviously extraordinarily gratifying to get donations on behalf of these programs to begin with, and to see one, and the amount of a thousand dollars is very, very much appreciated. All in favor? Aye. High motion approved, David, two fifty-eight.
Establishing the Village Board as lead agency with respect to the Mandville Road corridor improvement project and schedule a public hearing, whereas the Village proposes to construct the Mandville Road corridor improvement project consisting of pedestrian enhancements along Mandville Road to be partially funded by the New York State Department of Transportation, and the creation of a civic space, Pocket Park, at the intersection of Memorial Plaza and Mandville Road, and whereas, on October twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen, Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville pursuant to Part six-one, seven-point-six of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE, declared their intent to be the lead agency with respect to the Mandville Road corridor improvement project, and whereas the notice of intent and the environmental assessment form, Part one, were circulated to all involved agencies with no objection, and whereas the proposed action has been declared an unenlisted action pursuant to SECRE, resolve that the Village Board of Trustees formally declares itself lead agency with respect to the Mandville Road corridor improvement project, and be it further resolved that the Village Board hereby schedules a public hearing for Monday, January fourteenth, at eight PM, on the third floor of Village Hall located at eighty Wheeler Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Do we want to have that on the third floor or the second floor? The public hearing?
Second floor.
Yeah.
So the mover and the seconder accept the modification of language to say the second floor?
I do.
Otherwise, we will not be able to accommodate too much of a group on the third floor. Second floor it is. So this is part of the process we will have to go through, and you'll hear more about that not only then, but thereafter.
And to make it clear, the Board will not be able to close the public hearing, we still need to wrap our minds around the parking situation. We won't have the study done by BFJ by that point, but this is a huge project, you're going to want to have more than one public hearing. So thought the timing worked out with Jamie giving her presentation that night to have the public hearing.
Okay, good.
Makes sense.
Sounds good. And so the presentation that Eric referred to is Jamie Larson coming to present the modifications that they propose to the civic space in response to our goal to reduce the budget. So we have a memo back from Wagner Hodgson in our packet today that's also included on the web that indicates the revised budget and the steps that they're taking, and then she'll be here on the fourteenth to present the drawings. All in favor of number two fifty-eight?
Aye.
High motion approved, Nicole, two fifty-nine.
Resolve that the pre-check register dated December tenth, two thousand and eighteen, covering check numbers nine-one-seven-zero-zero to nine-one-eight-five-one is hereby approved as listed below, and the general fund, two thousand, two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and fifty-eight cents, water fund, three-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and fifty-one cents, capital fund, three-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents, refuse fund, four-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty dollars and ninety-four cents, trust fund, seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and forty-three cents, for a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and two cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the check register? All in favor?
Aye.
High motion approved, two sixty, Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes for the Village Board meeting on November twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have no corrections, but would like to remind everybody that that meeting, which took place on December tenth, was our annual youth recognition meeting, and we were able to honor thirty-three Pleasantville High School students from a variety of organizations, including the farm market, the high school, the Holy Innocence Youth Group, the fire department, and the Pleasantville Ambulance Corps. So congratulations to all those folks, and thanks for their service, and thanks to the role their families and their group organizers play in making all of that happen. All in favor?
Aye.
High motion approved, two sixty-one.
Whereas sealed bids were advertised in the official Village newspaper and received on November twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, for periodic electrical repairs, installation and upgrade services, and whereas bids were received as per the following, vendor Delta Electric Inc. bid an hourly rate of one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, I'm sorry, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty, twenty cents per hour, and PRM Electric Inc. bid one hundred and twenty dollars per hour. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby awards the bid for periodic electrical repair, installation, and upgrade services to PRM Electric Inc. Croton Hudson, New York, for the period of December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, to May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
And bids are appended to the backup, any comments or questions?
Have we worked with them before?
We have not, but they do a lot of municipal work.
Oh, they did the police desk.
They came in and did some of the wiring. Yeah, very good.
But I worked with them in Croton, they were very good.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
High motion approved, two sixty-two, David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the increase in petty cash for the Recreation Department from one hundred to two hundred dollars, and be it further resolved that the one hundred dollar increase to be reserved has cash on hand for the Pleasantville Music Festival box office ticket sales.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pretty straightforward. Comments or questions?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
High motion approved, two sixty-three, Nicole. Just had a little flashback. Had a flashback.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Administrator to sign the memorandum of agreement with Westchester County for remote web access to the county clerk's land records and legal files via Westchester Records Online through December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pretty straightforward? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Any new business or comment from the public? With that, is there a motion to go into executive session for legal and personnel matters?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, I wish everybody happy holidays. We, as I mentioned, have a brief morning session on the twenty-seventh, at which we will do almost nothing except keep the business of the Village going, approving checks, and then we're back with a regular meeting on January fourteenth, which includes, among other things, the presentation by Jamie Maslin Larson of the civic space, and then the SECRE public hearing to follow. So happy holidays to all, happy new year, see you soon.